Good evening, welcome to the Danvers Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to ask everyone if you would turn off your cellphones so we're not interrupted in the meeting. The agenda for tonight's meeting is up here on the front table or outside by the door. And I'm going to introduce the members of the board to my right, Bob Signetti; I'm Becky Kilborn; to my left, Ken Scholes, who's our clerk; John Bowner; Jeff Sauer; Ken Jervinen; and Corinne Doherty; and from the Code Administration Department, we have our Building Inspector, Rich Maloney; and Kathy Archibald, our secretary. We have minutes from the past meeting, can I ask for a motion to accept those?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask for a motion to -- I've been the chair for the past year, we're going to turn over and have a new chair starting tonight, so I'm going to ask for a motion for a new chair.
Madam Chair, I nominate John Bowner to be our new chair. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I also nominate Ken Scholes to be our clerk.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I'm going to turn it over to John.
Thank you. Becky, and I will say on behalf of the rest of the board, thank you for a year well-served as our chair. And I don't think we got --
Have a good year.
Yeah, we didn't get in any trouble, so I think it went really well. And welcome, everybody, tonight to our Danvers Zoning Board meeting. I would ask that if you are presenting, you can come to either microphone, as far as I know, they're both working, but please announce your name and your address so we can put you on record. And we're gonna jump around with the agenda a little bit, we have one continued case that we're going to handle, and then we'll get one other residential case that we're going to go to next, and then we'll start up at the top of the agenda. So with that said, and Corinne and Ken are alternates, and their votes will be counted if in a situation where any of the five voting members are not voting. So that's it, Ken, if you could read it.
Go through the procedure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so you're going to present your case to us, the zoning board will then ask you questions, from there we'll go out to the audience and get public comment there. And then at that point, we close the meeting, and we deliberate, and it's part of the public process, but right here for you to hear our deliberations. We ask that we are not interrupted during deliberations, you'll get to hear and how the vote goes, and based on that, we'll give you what your options are, whether you have the votes, if you don't have the votes, and where you want to go from there. So, but that's it, Ken?
Thank you, new Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Our first case is Kelly Reedy, docket 19-4840, requesting a variance from front setbacks to erect an addition in accordance with Table 2, Section 7 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 7 Trinity Street, which is zoned in R3.
My name's John Castron, speaking for Ms. Reedy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think you should come up here.
Yeah, you want to, yeah, come on over there. I guess I gave them too many options. If I remember correctly, we continued this case, we were looking for the Conservation Commission's report, which I believe all our members have received, and if you can just tell us from there.
I guess I was waiting for that order of contempt.
Yep.
Cast that in, I think that's all we needed.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think there was anything else, so I'm gonna come over and start with the board. Bob, questions?
I don't have any questions, we were just waiting for that conservation report, we got it, and he has to do what they say, so no problem.
Becky?
I don't have any questions, I don't see any issues.
Okay. Really no questions. This is already on record in the registry?
No.
When we do record it?
You can file this at the same time, it's a variance on your --
No, no other questions, thanks.
Thank you. Jeff?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Ken?
I have no questions.
And Corinne?
I just have one comment, if you remember, some members on the board were actually thinking of asking you to move, but based on these orders of condition, where you have this cited is as far back, I want to say maybe an inch further, you could go back, so it's really the only spot you can cite this. Yeah, okay, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, well, actually, my only question was that, I think they asked for 50 feet, if I read this correctly, and you are at 52.7, does that sound right?
They put on the conditions 52 feet.
They did, okay.
They did, 52.
Okay. And Rich, just to clarify, this permit couldn't be issued unless you guys had this order as well?
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else, anything else on the board, questions-wise? Okay, I'll go out to the audience, anybody here to speak on 7 Trinity Street? Yep, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Doug and Tal Media Member, Precinct 1. So at the last hearing, we talked about kind of the differences, the backyard was Concom, the front yard was the ZBA, so we've got that ironed out, so the status quo for the building itself is gonna, the footprint is going to stay where it is.
Yeah, I believe there's no changes in the layout, yeah.
Right, so can you just, at a high level, the Concom, what was their, what was their order conditions in terms of the back of the building? There was a patio, I believe, or some type of hard surface that was in play there?
I mean, I know the topography was, there's some kind of drop-off at the rear of this property, and so they asked it to be 52 feet from the water, and I believe you're 52.7 feet, so.
Is there no other place?
Yeah, and I also believe this keeps the back of the building even with the existing building, so to push it out further, I didn't think was going to come out to anything.
So I just wanted to thank you for kind of waiting for the order of conditions to make sure, because I know last, last time it was kind of, you were kind of tentative about whether or not you wanted to postpone it, but I want to thank you for doing that due diligence.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else here on 7 Trinity Street? Okay, hearing none, I'll come back to the board, we'll start down there again with you, Bob.
I don't have a problem with this, I'll vote for this.
I'll vote for this.
I will vote for this.
I will vote for this, too.
I will vote for this, too.
Okay, and I to support this, and thank you for getting this cleared up, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the dimensional variance for a front setback from required 30 feet to 22.3 feet. The hardship is not only the size of the lot, but there's a wetland resource at the rear of the property which precludes the building to be anywhere else.
Second?
I got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck, see the building inspector.
Thank you.
He'll meet you in the hall.
Thanks. All right, moving very long, next case.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian and Ann Farmer, docket 20-4848, requesting a special permit to convert a garage to an extended family living area in accordance with Section 9.3 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 8 Weston Street, zoned in R2.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could go over to the microphone, we are on cable television, so it's hot sometime.
I'm Brian Farmer, 8 Weston Street in Danvers, my wife Ann is here tonight in the audience, and my daughter Joan also. This is Mr. Bob Grasso, he was the registered professional surveyor that put the site plan together, the existing conditions that's out there. In brief, you know, the existing garage, a previous special permit was granted for two home offices, a recreational area, a bathroom, a half-bath, and a kitchen act. And so what we're proposing is to add an EFLR, change the area use, and, you know, so one of the offices would turn into a bedroom.
Only one?
Only one.
Yeah.
So it's a larger one. We're not really changing the layout of the floor plan, no new walls, we, you know, so we're changing that use to a home, that home office to a one-bedroom, would be adding a shower and tub combination to the half-bath, and, you know, a stove, I guess, in the kitchen area. So that's the inside floor plan, and then because it's on the second floor, there's safety issues, the second means out, was shown on that site plan, that we just couldn't do it in the front and on the side, and it just appeared that the back of the property was the best way to access, I mean, emergency means out, that was the plan. And we've talked with that a butter, that stair, second means access, we're going to build a new fence, a privacy fence, and whatever railing system or something, we'd minimize.
Okay. So you're saying this EFLR would be on the second floor of the garage?
Correct.
And that's not going to be an issue for the person, I guess that's taken, who is taken?
My daughter.
Okay. Okay, so it's not an elderly parent or anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it, really.
Okay, I'll turn it over to the board, Corinne, we'll start down there with you.
So you have the first floor that's an existing garage, and there's a door over in the corner, am I looking at this correctly?
Yes. That's between the house and the garage, the garage is like 60 feet off the house.
Okay.
So that's how we access from the house, the offices upstairs.
Okay.
That's the first floor.
And the office in the front is remaining, and it's just the other three rooms that you're going to be kind of changing updating?
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Corinne, Ken?
So what's the total square footage, was that 720?
It's the, the whole area up above is like 846 square feet, that's including, that's everything up there on the second floor.
So how much is the EFLR part?
Depending on how the, you know, if you take the one office out, if, you know, it's less than 750 square feet.
Okay.
It's 746.
And where's the, is there shared living space up there?
I think it's just one unit, it's just one unit.
So there's an audit area upstairs that you could share with someone else, or, I mean, share with some?
It wouldn't be a dual-family, one unit.
No, it's a separate building, Ken, it's a garage.
Over a garage.
Oh, that's right, yeah. You have the little breezeway though, in the middle, right, connecting?
It's a walkway.
Walkway?
Yeah, the utilities come underneath.
Yeah, all right, I just want to know if there was shared, all right, I have no other questions.
Thanks, Ken, Jeff?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
Becky?
Just to get it straight in my mind, you're just going to convert an office to an apartment, or an EFLR?
Yes.
You already got a kitchen, you already got bathrooms, so really all you're going to do is put in another regress, right?
In a bedroom.
And that's it. I don't have any other questions.
The zoning means that the entrances have to be on the side.
All set up?
Yep.
Yep, thanks. So the first floor still acts as a garage?
Yes.
Yeah, and the entrance besides this proposed deck is, what I see on here, it says existing ground, level four?
Yes.
And there's a set of stairs that bring you up?
That's the proposed.
Okay, so that doesn't exist currently?
Does not exist.
How do you currently get?
The existing stairs?
You saw, outside this side.
No, inside.
Oh, inside it does.
All right, so there's no change there?
No change there.
Same stairs. So currently how you access this is this ground-level door, and you go upstairs to the two offices that are there now?
Yes.
What he's proposing right now is an outside deck.
Can I ask if you identify yourself?
For the record, my name is Bob Grasso, who's the engineer, and I put this into the site plan. Brian's proposing a deck in the back with an egress slider, which is for fire and safety right now, currently upstairs, she's upstairs, so he's adding a deck with stairs that goes, which goes down to level ground on the outside of the building.
Okay.
With a proposed walkway, the existing walkway between the two buildings. The building will be serviced, it is serviced by water, sewer, cable.
From the main house?
From the primary house.
Okay.
So it meets all the codes for the EFLR.
Okay. And talk to me a little bit about the new fence, because I did see the state of the current fence, it didn't look too good.
The baseball chain link fence, so on the, if you looked --
I don't know, there's kind of a green wall, and then there's a fence behind it.
That's a different, that's an existing, yeah, that's a different property line on the --
A different property line?
Yeah, well, it's not the --
That looked like a baseball bat.
Tennis backboard.
Tennis backboard, okay.
That's what it was.
Talking right here.
Yeah, I saw a --
It's a sports play ball.
Yeah, no, I'm talking, the fence behind that, is that what's being replaced?
No.
No?
That's a vital fence between number 66 Window Street and 8 Weston, which is his property. You're talking about this fence in the back?
Well, just point to me the fence you said you were going to change.
Okay.
That, the rear fence?
The rear fence, yes.
Okay, that's going to be changed from what's there now?
Yes.
And what's there now?
It's a chain link.
It's chain link, and you're going to?
Whatever the butter really wants, for the privacy.
And that's just because you're putting this deck on, with stairs?
Yes.
I see. I think I got it.
Right now, that doesn't exist, that's proposed with deck, that's a, that'll be upper deck.
So is there like a window there now, and you're going to put a slider?
No.
Nothing?
I do have two windows.
Upstairs?
There's one in the lower area, and there's one in one of the office windows, I do got a rendering, it's just too small, hung window, I guess two feet, like four feet, in the lower garage area, it's like a two-foot square one.
Okay.
On this one, the lower corner, and on the upper corner, there's just one window.
Okay, any?
It's slightly less over the, yeah.
Any additional questions from anyone? Yep.
Would you take that as a condition that a new fence must be constructed?
Yes.
That way that kind of ensures a neighbor gets it.
Sure, okay. Becky, did you have something?
I was just going to suggest that he moves that so people can see what he's pointing at.
Oh, yeah.
Just put it up against that little wall.
Kind of near the applicant.
Yeah.
There you go.
That's better.
I think they can pick it up on the camera, but.
It's all right.
No, we got it.
It's where we usually put it, so.
Okay, so I think we're all set?
Yeah.
Questions-wise? All right, we'll go out to the audience, anybody here on 8 Weston Street? Yeah, go ahead up, just identify yourself.
Hi, Kelly Walgreen.
Right in the mic, please.
Kelly Walgreen.
Hi. What address?
185 Maple Street.
185 Maple.
So we're down below, my parents' house is down below the Weston area and neighborhood, and wanted to express concern for, in general, the construction that's taking place up there, which is resulting from curbs that are being taken away, and when that happens, and my parents have expressed this to the town hall many times, the water comes down the hill and into their, into their home.
Okay, well, they're not proposing any change to the building, this is just the interior of the building, but, so you're saying there's existing problems with?
Every time, every time construction happens to the, to the house, it's up on the hill.
The interior.
Yeah, it's only interior construction, though, so they're not doing any digging, they're not doing anything exterior.
Okay, so even note of the fence and change?
It's not good enough.
There wouldn't be any curbing or anything?
No curbing, change nothing, doesn't sound like any changes, if anything, the fence would just be replacing an existing fence with a better one.
Okay.
If you do have problems, though, I mean, this is the time to hear about them, I guess, not that we can fix them.
Did you talk to the building inspector? I did get an email from him, I did talk to the town hall engineer.
Okay.
So I just told him that this was a conversion of an existing garage, but he was saying there are other issues up there, but this really isn't anything that would cause any more problems with anything.
So I see there's a zero impact to that existing problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and, her and Walgreen, her husband, so I mean, I would just say that, you know, clearly with development happening up there, something's going on, so whatever the town can do to help alleviate that, obviously it's a lot of stress to have.
Well, again, we're not really the town, we're the zoning board, and we're not, we don't represent the town in that way, so that is more, as Rich indicated, the engineering departments, and if there is other construction up there, that would be a point, I guess, to talk to building inspector about?
Yeah, like I said, I talked to Steve King, the town engineer, when I got your email, just let know what the scope of this project was, and he acknowledged there are some other issues, but nothing we can do with this paper.
So they can contact the town engineer.
Yeah, I would say, you know, on it, though, if it continues, and talk with the town engineer, nothing we can do, we're just here to do zoning.
Yeah, I mean, it's just because of the construction projects that have been approved up there over time, each one has taken away more and more curbs, so it does sort of have to do with each part of the town hall, but the home's been there 100 years, and only recently has had the problems due to the construction that's been --
And there's mostly water?
Yeah, I mean, it's a hill, right?
Runoff.
That comes down to 62, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here on 8 Weston Street? Okay, we'll come back to the board. Corinne?
I would vote for this.
Thank you.
I too would vote for this.
I would vote for this, Mr. Chairman, yes.
I have no problem with this.
I would vote for this.
I will vote for this with the condition that the fence go in.
I to support this with the condition of a new fence on the rear of the property. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the special permit in accordance with Section 9.3.3.2, the zoning bylaw for an extended family living area is shown on the drawing in a detached structure, garage, in Section 9.3.4E, for an oversized extended family living area, total area 846 square feet, with the condition that a new fence be constructed at the rear of the property. The municipal water and sewer shall not be overloaded by the EFLR, the public street shall not become overloaded by the EFLR, the value of other buildings and properties shall not be depreciated, this specific site is an appropriate location for the EFLR, the EFLR will not adversely affect the neighborhood, there will not be undue nuisance to vehicles or pedestrians, inadequate proper facilities will be provided to ensure the proper operation of the proposed EFLR. The proposed EFLR will be in harmony with the general purpose of the bylaw.
For clarification, could, I think you, can we say 720 square feet, or do you want it, the whole thing?
It's kind of tough to say that that office isn't part of the EFLR.
Okay, so you want the whole thing, yeah.
So it's the whole second floor?
We wouldn't have to be here.
Yeah, okay. I'll second that.
I've got a motion, and I got a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See the building inspector, good luck. Okay, we're going to go to the top of the agenda now, if we could, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, our next case is Newberry Conifer Investment LLC, docket 19-4845, requesting a variance to add a second sign to the front facade in accordance with Section 37.4A and B of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 311 to 313 Newberry Street, this is zoned as highway corridor.
Good evening.
Good evening, my name's Gary McCoy.
Mr. McCoy, before you get started, is anyone here from CVS?
No.
Do we want to proceed?
Let's hear what he answers.
Okay, we like to have the manager and owners of the property present, but we'll listen to what you have to say.
Okay, great. I see folks already have a handout of the drawing. The request that we have here is for add a second sign on the front of the building to identify the Minute Clinic, which is in the store, not all the CVS stores have a Minute Clinic, and I'm not even sure if we really need to be here, because the Minute Clinic is a separate licensed business, and is really like a tenant within the building, so I'm not even sure if we really need to be here or not. Section 37.4-E of the code, this is for your multi-tenant building, they'll be allowed another attached wall sign under the same code of restrictions of the highway corridor, Section 4, so I'm not even sure if we really.
Oh, we're getting a [inaudible].
Can I ask you a question, are you going to have a separate entrance?
It, no, there's only one entrance to the building.
And it's not two tenants?
Not two businesses, eh?
One.
Well, that's.
But I'll defer to the building inspector on this.
I mean, you see a lot of co-granted places, like if you had a Subway in there, or Dunkin' Donuts, or something you see at the gas stations, they have one entrance, so I was thinking this would fall under the same thing, it's got a separate business license.
Think she can put a sign up by right.
Because this is a separate business?
Separate business.
How, how do you?
Well, it's the first time I've heard that, nobody's presented that to me, so.
Would that require a separate entrance, as a second tenant?
Not necessarily.
Yeah?
You have, so bank inside, stop and shop.
All right, okay.
You have shared businesses, certain requirements of the building code, you can't have different hours, obviously, the primary tenant, you know, like you can't be in CVS for CVS license, also got issues like that with the building code, but, yeah, nobody's presented that to me, I guess we'd have to look at some business documents, either run by Tom Council, or by the department, and I, whether it's a separate entity.
Yeah, I have a copy of the license with me, if you'd like me to pass it out, I could do that, or if we need to, you folks tell me how you want to handle it, if we need to continue it, or we go back to building and talk about it further on what the allowances are, but I didn't, you know, I don't personally do all the filings for the permit, so I'm not springing this on you, but once it got to me and I started looking at it, and was like, well, this is a separate situation, and I don't think we really need to come before the board, but everything had already been filed and whatnot, so thought it'd be best not to waste anybody's time, but at least bring it in here.
Well, yeah, let's continue with your presentation, and we'll figure it out as we go here.
Well, it's not continuing.
If he's going to go separate, right?
Well, let's continue the case.
You want to do it, all right.
And he can present me with documentation this week, and I can send it off, and we can confirm and deny what, if that's the case, we're just going to hear it.
Okay.
While we're here, though, can I ask the building inspector about the?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
The storage containers on their parking lot, are they okay?
Without building permits, it would be fine.
Okay, that's all.
And that goes to for the dumpster as well?
Yep.
Good.
February 24th.
Our next meeting would be February 24th, so I guess, is that enough time, Rich? All right, we're going to get a motion to continue.
I move that we continue this case to February 24th.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you February 24th.
That was, that was quick.
I think Rich is going to go around me in the hall.
We didn't buy it for the Chrysler deal, but when he said he had seven different dealerships.
All right, we're getting there.
Hey, we're doing pretty good. All right, Mr. Clerk, you may.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, our next case is 61 Mooney Street LLC, docket 20-4846, requesting a variance to allow a portion of the property to be used for an automotive repair facility in accordance with Table 1 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 151 Andover Street, and this is zoned as Route 114, Corridor A.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Today's Collision Repair Center with me tonight is Bobby Cobb, who is the owner of today's collision. And it's a business that's been in existence in Massachusetts for 30 years, three other locations that today's collision operates out of, and we're here to request a variance to allow light collision repair in a portion of the property located at 151 Andover Street. Seems like it's been a couple of years since I've been before you for a variance for different types of automotive uses in this property, but in fact, if you go back and look through the history, there have been 13 variances granted over the years. The building was constructed in the early 80s or so, and it has really evolved into an automotive repair, automotive sales and service type of facility. I met with Rich Maloney before I filed this, because in fact, this board did grant variance for collision repair to Dent Wizard some years ago, which is similar in nature to what we're proposing. And because we're not located in exactly the same location within the space, Rich said that we should file to come before you for this variance that we're requesting tonight. So this is a multi-tenanted building located on 114, which is located here, the access road that goes into Lowe's, and the office building is located here, Lowe's is over here, and Kelly Infinity is up in this section. What I've outlined in green is the area that today's collision has under lease, subject to, of course, getting this permit to operate today's collision for light auto body repair services. The other tenants in the building, again, very much auto maintenance, auto repair related. We have NTB Automotive Services, we have Automotive Sales and Service located here, we have Danvers Auto Engineering, which is engine types of repairs and service, and then Enterprise Rent a Car is located here. So the proposed light collision repair is very much in keeping with the other types of uses that have been in this building. We've had auto glass repair, which you've granted variance for, as well as, as I mentioned, the other collision service that is no longer located in the building. This is really going to be an express collision type of repair, in that they're doing light repair, repair service that takes one to two days, no more than that. And it's all by appointment. So you would call up, make your appointment, tell them what type of situation you have, what type of repair is needed, and then it will be determined whether this is the appropriate location for you, or whether you should go to one of the three other today's collision repair facilities that do heavier repair. They do the longer term rebuilding types of things in their other locations, which are located in Malden, Chelsea, and Stonem. This is going to be a smaller location, where really one to two days, the light type of door dings and things like that, that need to be taken care of. They do insurance estimates, and some light accessory for car finishes would be applied here as well. But it's all by appointment. Operation is in keeping with the same types of hours that you have in the rest of the building, Monday through Friday, 7 to 6, Saturday, 7 to 2, no hours on Sunday, and they are anticipating eight full-time employees. There are no engine repairs being done, it's strictly exterior cosmetic body types of repairs. All of the repairs are done inside the building, there wouldn't be any outside repairs, there are no exterior changes necessary to this building, we have existing overhead doors already from the vehicles in. Under the lease, today's collision has 39 parking spaces allocated on site, and those are designated here, as well as back here. So there are plenty of parking spaces, perhaps even more than what they will actually need. They can accommodate about 10 vehicles inside the building. I think, at this point, I think that's really, really it. It's a use that very much is in keeping with other types of uses within the building. We do need a variance, because this is a non-conforming building, and this board has had the jurisdiction over this building since the early use for automotive repair, and as I said, there's some 13 variances have already been granted. And today's collision and Mr. Cobb already have relationships with the dealers in the area, and that's going to make up a lot of their business, with his dealer service, getting the dings and the things taken care of before vehicles are delivered, or as a repair service for customers. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and ask with Mr. Cobb.
So this is a place that while Mom and Dad went away on vacation, and you dented the door, you can get it fixed before they get back?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
I think I got it. Let's start down there with you, Bob.
It's your turn.
Oh, it's Corinne. I already messed up, huh?
Oh.
Corinne, you're up.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ken?
Yeah, I don't have any questions either.
And Jeff?
I have a couple of questions. How, is Mr. Cobb, is it, how is he going to maintain control of those parking spaces when every time I go to rent a car at Enterprise, there's cars stacked all over the place, from Maseratis to rental cars?
Well, the site is under new ownership. For about the last year or so, it has been under a different ownership, and they have actually come up with a detailed outline. Mr. Pereso would have loved to recall, I've given this many times in my own color-coded way, but there is actually tenant designations.
Okay, so they'll paint the pavement, or they'll put up signage, or?
Necessary, or they would be signed, but.
Okay.
Please, if you'd like.
Thank you.
But it's very detailed, exactly who gets which spaces. DAC is Danvers Auto Engineering, ENT is Enterprise Rent a Car, KM is the Kelly Automotive, NTB is the inventory, and TC is total pleasure.
Because we have, we have had, as I recall, problems with this property, with fire lanes not being clear, and cars being parked in the back along the side of the building. I know that was when Kelly, you know, was dealing with some of those issues, and.
Right, which sometimes comes with automotive dealerships, where now we're really ended up, this is service, this is a service building now. Many years ago, there used to be an issue with cars being parked out on the right way, and that was taken care of, when Mr. Rossio owned this property. And I think it's operated better, but the new, the new owners with this new chart, I think they're allowed to operate even better, and making things very clear. And Mr. Cobb went through this with him as well, to make sure he knew exactly where his spaces were paid.
And the other question I had was, I know in automobile collision repair, there's a lot of paint, there's a lot of OSHA kind of stuff that's got to be taken care of. Who do you have to work with to make sure that all that permitting and equipment is up to order, and?
If you could speak into the mic, please.
Hi, my name is Bobby Cobb, I live at 65 Aurelius Sylvie Drive in Revere, Massachusetts. I would, we think that would go under the building, to building inspector and everything that we have to put in, they got to comply with state regulations.
Right.
So everything we would put in, they would have to comply with that.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Ken? Thank you, I have no questions.
Becky?
My only question is, I know you're going to have cars that are going to need repair. Are you planning to park those more in the back? Every, all of the businesses that are in there now, it's like tires, or engine repair, so the outside of the car basically looks good, I would say. And I know you're going to have smashed up, to some extent, cars. So just where would, what's your plan for how you will organize that?
So most of the stuff there is not going to be too smashed up, it's mostly ding and repairs. I mean, our two primary, so Lionwa Auto Group, which is loans BMW PBD, Mini PBD, Accuray PBD, Land Rover Jaguar PBD, and Tesla, I don't know if you guys aware, Tesla's moving into the PBD side of all. Those are our two biggest clients.
Okay.
So we kind of propose with them, so most of the stuff's going to be all minimal stuff. So it will be in the backside of it, which I think everybody's complaining with the fire lane is, but it's going to be small, and this, I think, on that backside's the most parking. There's a lot of parking back there, so that should be the most side of it, but it's going to be all, like maybe a bumper off, a fender, but nothing major structure, nothing, anything be there at all.
So you have parking in the back and the front?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right. That's my only question.
Thank you, Becky. Bob?
What are you going to do, mostly dings, that kind of thing?
Yes, dings, scratches, new bumper, replace bumpers, if it's a fender, type of small stuff, real minimal amount of stuff.
Stuff that happens at a dealership, when someone opens a door, and that kind of thing?
Currently, Lionwa Auto Group and Tesla will, Tesla will be open, I think, in a few weeks. They, we actually have to bring all the cars down into the Malden, where our main location is, so we were kind of looking to come up this way, to be a little bit closer to the dealerships that we do business with. And they're one of our primary customers.
Okay. Because you kind of massage those out, those little dings.
Little bit, oh yeah.
Yeah, I've got a cousin in the business. Second question, are you taking over the entire Kelly operation? Or part of it?
I think just part of it, I think Kelly's remaining here.
Yes, Kelly's where, there's a car wash, I don't know if you guys have been by it, but there's a car wash in a little service area that Kelly's maintaining that, and we're taking over where I think it was the showroom that Maserati was in, and then there's a couple little service spaces, like right here, that they do the detailing and stuff in, that they're doing currently now, we'd be taking that over too.
So he's not going to sell cars?
No, no, no.
Out of there?
No. Oh, Kelly, you mean? No, I don't think so, I think they're just using it for service, and I can't speak to them.
So he's just going to, just going to have a car wash there?
Yes. Across the street, for their Infinity dealership.
Yeah, no, no, I know that. All right, that's, that was my concern, whether you were taking the whole big area, whether Kelly was still going to be there. So there's more cars parking, by the way.
Yeah. They only got a few designated spots, I think, though.
All right, no further questions. Thank you, Bob. So what happened to Dent Wizard? Was it there? I thought it was in that location.
It was there, it was there for quite a few years.
Was it where Danvers Engineering?
No, it was, part of the space was Dent Wizard. Danvers Auto Engineering has been there longer.
Yeah, they're good guys.
So what, what kind of renovations or changes will take place inside the building?
There are going, there's going to be, I think we gave you perhaps a layout. Just some work areas, and the biggest change is the, there is going to be a very small spray booth for the painting, and that's where the painting would happen, and that's in this section right here.
And so if I'm looking at this correct, there's seven bay openings, is that right?
Bay doors?
Bay doors, yeah, okay.
Yes, and you mentioned fifteen, ten vehicles.
And I think I heard you say no more than 10 in there, okay. So I love parking plans, because, you know, they all look great on paper, right? And they're all, they go in the same bucket to me as traffic studies, which mean nothing in the real world. And you already mentioned yourself, you know, the troubles we had down there with the fire lane. So would you be minimal to marking these spots on the pavement? Because I think what I've seen with, over the years, is, you know, the people change, the managers change, and they're like, we don't know anything about that decision, we don't know where we're supposed to park. So you would take that as a condition? Great. I think that's all I have, the questions. Anybody else, anything further?
I just have one question. Back in 2010, there was a variance granted, but it was, it was only granted for a period of 24 months. Why did you put the restriction on? Why was it only for 24 months? And then it was going to revert back to?
Kelly was, Kelly was remodeling one of those.
Yeah, it was a temporary storage they wanted.
Oh, okay. All right, so it was because they had only asked for 24 months? All right. Okay.
Yeah.
And it became to Maserati.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, that's it, that was my only question.
Anyone else?
Nope.
All right, we'll go up to the audience on 3, oh, no, sorry.
151.
151 Andover Street. Andover Street, yes, Mr. Bradstreet.
Bill Bradstreet, town meeting member, president one. Was mentioned about the chemicals that would be your inflammables, whatever you want to call them, that would be stored inside. Does that require a state approval and a local approval? Our local fire department has to approve that also?
I'll ask the building inspector that one.
Well, they're going to get a building permit, and they're going to do some work, they'll be inspected, and there's certificate of occupancy.
And that certificate of occupancy, they list what chemicals and paints they'll store on site?
They allow, the building code deals with these two different levels, so in this case, it's a automotive repair, it's a S2 use group, I believe, and you're limited, you can have certain amount of chemicals up to a certain point. Once you exceed those amounts, the control amounts, you become a high hazard. In this case, the amounts that they have, they're typically in small containers, they don't exceed the.
So they don't kick themselves into the high hazard?
The building's a non-combustible building, it's supposed to sprinkle, so clearly won't go on, it won't change the use from an S2, which is auto repair and equipment, it won't cross that threshold of the high hazard.
But the town takes care of this permitting, and it's not at the state level? Okay, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any additional questions on 151 Andover Street? None, we'll go back to the board. Corinne? Corinne, sorry.
I would vote for this.
I would vote for this, too.
I will vote for this.
I think this building is in, in keeping with what was there and what is there, so I will definitely vote for this.
I will vote for this, and I want to say that I drove down and took a look at both your Stonem and Malden facilities over the weekend, and everything was very neat and meticulous, it looked great. So I would definitely vote for this, and I think it's in keeping with what's in that building.
Thank you, Becky.
I also would vote for this, and we can add it to the list of all the others we have.
I too will vote for this, with the condition that the spots be marked, especially considering it's a multi-tenant facility, and infighting always happens, so this way you know what spots you have. So could I get a motion with that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance from Section 6, Table 1, to allow a portion of the building to be used for automotive repair through the plan submitted. The hardship is in the application. And the condition of, that, just his spots?
Yeah.
Yeah, he doesn't own the building.
He's the only one that quarrel, so.
Maybe he's got plenty of paint, he can pay him off. That he, he marked the parking.
The 39 spots.
The 39 spots.
I got a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good luck, welcome to Danvers.
Welcome to Danvers.
Okay, folks, just give us one second here, and we'll get into our last case. Okay, Mr. Clerk, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our final case of the evening, Susan M. Prentice Trust, docket number 20-4847, requesting a variance in finding to replace commercial buildings with one multifamily residential building in accordance with Section 3.10.3 and Table 2 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 141 Pine Street, Zone Residence 1.
Yeah, Attorney McCann, please stop, we're going to read in a letter from.
She might, she might just want to talk about it.
Is that from?
The chair of the 401 housing.
Why don't, do you want me to, I was going to include that in my presentation?
Very good.
That's fine.
Very good, no problem.
Sounds good.
You saved me from leaving out.
It's a long letter.
Excellent. Hi, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant in one fourteen Pine Street LLC. With me tonight is John Thompson, Carol McDonald, and Gordon Thompson, who are principals of the one forty-one Pine Street LLC. Also with me tonight is the project engineer, Dan Skolski, project doctor, Dan Skolski. The project engineer, Scott Cameron, is sip of the blue. So.
But he's not here.
I suggested that he not come. And so I am going to do my best to present his plan to you as well this evening. So we are here requesting a finding in order to allow the substitution of non-conforming use for another non-conforming use as well as substitution of non-conforming buildings. We have requested a variance to the extent that it's necessary. However, I think that it is consumed within the, within the finding that has been requested. The property is located at one forty-one Pine Street. It is located in the Residence One zoning district. It is, however, a site that has been commercially used for, for many years. The building was originally commercially used starting back as early as the mid nineteen seventies. The, to orient you a bit, Pine Street is here. This is the site. We have the Danvers Rail Trail immediately adjacent to the site. We have ball fields. We're located here. Across the street, we have commercial uses and part of the rezoning, Tapley, Tapleyville rezoning. That was done a number of years ago, which was created as a mix of commercial on the first floor and compact, relatively dense housing above on the upper floors in the Tapleyville District. And that's located across the street. And located right here is the Danvers Alarm List property, otherwise known as the Rebecca Nurse property, is located right here. The existing site, and you can see it on your plan, is commercial in nature. We have two buildings. Both of those buildings are non-conforming. We have a long building right here, which is.
Nancy, you might want to put that down so they can see, cause they're all. Thank you.
Which is located about five feet off of, off of the lot line and it's located closer to the front lot line. So this building is non-conforming as to side as well as front lot lines. And that is a commercial use that has had a number of findings granted over the years for a variety of different commercial uses. In the back, we have a commercial cinder block type of garage that's, that's located in the back here. This building is also non-conforming as to the side setbacks.
That building is there by variance.
That building is there by variance.
Yes.
It's also non-conforming.
The use is non-conforming.
The use is non-conforming.
The building is, the building is there by variance.
As, and it is six point five feet from the sidewalk. Number of uses have been granted by finding over the years, various offices, retail and other types of sales with outdoor storage, fast food in the nature of ice cream shops, outdoor storage of inventory, outdoor contractor yard, landscaping yard, and farmer's market have all been zoned on this site through the finding because of the non-conforming status of the property located in a residence as one zoning district. But the uses have been commercial in nature as a result of the finding status. Almost the entirety of the site is either paved or hard packed. We have some photographs here of the existing site. This is taken from Pine Street. These are the two curb cuts that you can see here and here. And it is all very much paved. This is the, the building that's located right here. So all of this is currently paved basically up to the garage in the back. And I do have some photographs that you can get a better look if you'd like up close.
Thank you.
Some of you have, not all of you have gone by to take a look at it, but if you didn't go further into the back, you may have not seen some of the conditions further in the back. This is the garage building and various storage of plows and things in the back. What we are proposing for this is an, is an opportunity to transform a commercial use and commercial buildings into a residential use, which we would certainly suggest to use more in people with a residential zone in which the property is located. The site is a bit over an acre. It has a hundred and eighty-five feet of carnage on Pine Street. And again, has the non-conforming buildings are located on it. The proposal is to redevelop the site, to eliminate the two existing buildings. So this building here and this building, the garage in the back, would be eliminated. And this is the, the proposed site plan for the property. So we would have one building, a residential multifamily building. We would have a significant amount of green space added to the site with a lot of attention being put to providing green space along Pine Street and along the rail trail here. And again, trans, uh, transposing this property from a commercial property into a residential property and substituting the non-conforming commercial use for the proposed multifamily use. We are proposing within this one building, we are proposing twenty-nine units. Those units are all one-bedroom units. They will all be rental units. This is a little unusual from the types of residential developments I brought before you over, over the years. Very often we'll see multi-bedroomed, three-bedroom, four-bedroom, multifamily uses. This is to address a need and provide additional housing options within the downtown area for single-bedroom uses, small units that will be rental and will, will meet that, that particular need. Danvers has certainly identified housing and a variety of housing options as being a need that Danvers needs to address now. You see that in some rezoning. And this is an opportunity to take a site that's in a residential zone already, but unfortunately is being used for commercial purposes that can be repurposed and redeveloped for, for residential uses. The new building will eliminate the non-conformities as to the front step back. The building is set back in excess of forty feet, which meets the multifamily requirements in the R1 zoning district. We also meet the thirty-foot step back on this side, which, which is required. We are non-conforming in one location right here at this pinch point where twenty-six feet from the side, from the side lot line. So I have requested a variance there. However, I think it's really also covered in the substitution of the non-conformity that we have here. But I did want to point out, this is twenty-six feet here. We are proposing one point three parking spaces per unit. Again, these are one-bedroom units. And we think that that is a sufficient amount of parking. I know parking is not within this board's jurisdiction necessarily. Obviously, this project will have to go through site plan approval. So we would be requesting a waiver on parking for, for the parking for this site from the planning board. And I do want to be clear that we would be seeking that waiver. I don't believe we'll be seeking other waivers. I think that will be it. But the one point three spaces that we are proposing for these single-bedroom units seems to be in keeping with the parking analyses that have been done for the town by the town's own consultants with what's required for one-bedroom types of units. The site is located, as I said, immediately abutting the rail trail, which will be a very nice amenity for those folks who, who will be living here. As I said, we have Tapleyville zoning across the street, which has some commercial types of uses, restaurants and shops and, and the grocery store across the street, which will work well with the, with these residential uses. And residents who will be living here will be able to group pedestrian access. They won't need to take a car and they can, they can visit and frequent the shops and the businesses in the Tapleyville zoning district, which really was the intent of the Tapleyville zoning district. We. I don't want to steal Dan's thunder. So you've got the code, the existing conditions. And we're really excited about the design of the building that Dan has come up with. The, the applicants and the architectural team have really worked hard to bring in the history of Danvers into this site and to create a building that, that will fit well with Danvers' history. So.
Dan Skolski.
Could you go to the mic, please? Thanks.
There's no room.
Dan Skolski, DMS Design, one hundred Cummins Center in Beverly, architects of this project. As Nancy said, we think this is a pretty fantastic site, right on the rail trail, walkable to McKinnons and the whole neighborhood there, close to downtown. I think it's really good for multifamily. And we try to do a few things with this design. We are looking around. We understand the site has an, an older history of supporting the railroad. We drew some inspiration from that. We understand it's next to Rebecca Nurse Homestead. We drew some inspiration from that. And that's to say, we're not trying to mimic any of those things, but we are trying to make it more house-like in the architecture and architectural design. And from the railroad, I mean, often those terminals had very strong roofs, big overhangs, brackets supporting the roofs. We drew some inspiration from that. We sited the building intentionally to put the narrow face towards Pine Street to, to, so to take the mass and put it into our site, not parallel to the street. We thought that was very important. We intentionally stayed as far away from the Rebecca Nurse Homestead as we could. So we're, we're on the right side of our property as opposed to being centered. We are no more than thirty feet. We're not requesting any height relief from this project. And then we took some care to really try to break down the box. So we have articulation in our floor plan. We've got this main bay in the center and some smaller bays to get to the edges. We've got an overall manseared roof that wraps the building with a dual pitch. We have different designs for the roofs of the dormers with a lot of overhangs. Secondary roof at the, at the second floor line, supported by brackets. A number of pavement roofs on the top of the first floor. We've got a water table, a belt line, and a number of siding conditions with some vertical siding, some, and some shingles. We've got a different color scheme. We've got a deep green down the bottom base, a lighter, a toky gray in the middle and some white up top with some light brown or charcoal gray, asphalt roofing up top. This is black standing ceiling roofing at the main entry, at our porch and at our we do have roofs over windows, black windows with white trim. And we do have a sitting porch on the front that faces Pine Street, which will be a, an amenity for our residents, but also kind of breaks down the scale of the building. So it makes us shorter and has some, some shadow lines in the building. And that's our major thought process for the design of the exterior. As Nancy said, we have twenty-nine units, all one-bedrooms. We have a couple of different designs, some one-bedroom, some one-bedroom ten, ten units on the second and third floors, nine on the first floor to accommodate for a sitting room for the residents. And we are proposing to have a basement, which will have, our elevator will go down. It will be fully accessible and it will have resident storage and some mechanical space down there.
And some what space?
Mechanical space.
Thank you.
And all of our parking that we're proposing is surface parking.
So no mechanical on the roof?
We, we will have some pre-packed condensers for the air conditioning. We will have individual systems per unit. Usually we put those on the roof, but when we do, we take great care to make sure that they're hidden. Not only do we do new construction, we do a lot of historic tax credit works. We're aware of sensitivities with this sort of equipment. We're not a harm snower. It's going. We do have some, I think, a nice opportunity on a property that's against the rail trail. Maybe put them in grade, but snow and things, I like to put them on the roof when I can. But we would take care to hide them visually or put them back away from the street. And the, and the size of those are typically the kind of things that you have on a single-family home. So you know, two feet by two feet, two feet tall. There's a few of them, but we'll, we'll group them together.
Thank you.
Prior to filing, we did meet with the building inspector to go through the existing uses of the site and, and the appropriate application should be filing with you. We've also met with the town planners to review the application with them. And then finally, we did meet last week with the Danvers Affordable Housing Trust. And you should have a letter of recommendation from the Affordable Housing Trust. As you know, this is a finding, which means that it is not required that we provide any affordable units under the Danvers zoning bylaw for this development. However, we are proposing ten percent of the units to be affordable in perpetuity. And we did meet with the, with the Affordable Housing Trust and they had a request of us that we did, that we did meet, but I would like to read their letter into the record if I could.
Sure.
Dear board members, I am writing on behalf of the Danvers Affordable Housing Trust in support of a proposed twenty-nine one-bedroom unit project by the Thompson Companies located at one forty-one Pine Street. It is our understanding that this project requires a finding from the Board of Appeals, that the proposed development would be less detrimental than the existing non-conforming commercial uses and if granted, site plan review before the planning board. Representatives from the Thompson Companies attended our January eighteen, twenty twenty, meeting to discuss the details of the project, specifically the anticipated inclusion of three of the proposed units to be deemed restricted affordable units. As the discussion progressed, the trust pointed out that while the vast majority of affordable units in Danvers are restricted to eighty percent of the area median income, AMI, the state's maximum level of affordability, there is an unserved deeper, sorry, uncertainty at deeper levels of affordability, notably at fifty percent or sixty percent of AMI. After discussing several potential options with the Thompson Companies, it was agreed that three units would be set aside, restricted at eighty percent AMI, and the third at sixty percent AMI. This would keep the project slightly ahead of its impact on the community vis a vis chapter forty B, ten percent mandate, while also achieving a deeper level of affordability that the trust values. The trust recognizes that both boards need to weigh many issues when deciding on the permits which may affect the proposal as it was presented. However, we do ask that you consider our concerns and recommendations when making your decision. So we have agreed to ten percent of the units being affordable in perpetuity. That would be three units, two units at eighty percent of AMI and one unit at sixty percent of AMI. Again, the renderings, I think, kind of speak for themselves a bit. This really is a. Again, the renderings, I think, kind of speak for themselves a bit. This really is an opportunity to dramatically improve this existing site and transform it from commercial into residential and to provide residential housing that's needed and affordable in the units that we've designated that are one-bedroom and that will really bring some vitality and some new residents to this area of town, and that can also support some of the businesses that we have in the Tapleyville district. For all of the reasons and the plans that you see tonight, we think that this proposal is certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is currently there and the commercial grandfathering uses that are there and which could continue and expand. So we would appreciate your support of the finding, and we will be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Just a couple of things I want to clarify. So we're a finding, but we're a variance on the setback?
I think we're a finding on that as well because the existing buildings are also non-conforming, and we're replacing it with a new building that, and substituting the new building that is less non-conforming than what is there. If the building inspector agrees with me on that, then we're not --
Do you see it that way?
Yes, I told them that in our meeting.
Okay. I just wanted to get that clear.
So I don't think I need the variance. I threw it in just in case.
Okay.
To be public.
And did I hear it right? 30 feet was the height of this building?
Yes. Yes, so we do leave the height requirement in setting just to --
And?
We do leave, we do leave for that.
I guess this jumps more into the planning side of things, but what is their requirement on parking spots on this?
Under the Danvers zoning bylaw, the bylaw has not been changed to reflect the findings that the --
Right. So what is on the books right now? What do they look?
Two spaces per unit.
Two per, okay.
No matter how many, up to two bedrooms. If you get into three bedrooms, you need three spaces.
Gotcha.
But for studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, you need two spaces.
And the 1.3 number you come at assumes a certain amount of guest spots, I guess? Or is it each?
That's the total that we're providing, and that's some may be.
And this has no garages?
No garages, no.
Okay. Okay, I'll save my additional questions for later. What's that? Is that it, Nancy?
That is it.
That's it. That's all right with you, Bob.
All right, a couple of questions.
Unlike the 40B, where all the units would be considered low-income to the 10%, that's not so with this, right?
It's just the three units.
It would just be the three units because this is not a 40B. That is correct.
Okay.
So the only three would go towards the condo?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, and we would have to go through that process with the assistance of the Affordable Housing Trust to have these units placed on the subsidized housing inventory list.
Okay. Also, if you were to do this by right, how many units could you build?
Six.
So where did you get the magic 29? How does that number come up?
That's not --
Instead of 28, or 25, or eight?
Well, the site is laid out with the architect and with Scott Cameron as the project engineer to see how it best fits on the site and how the parking can work as what's required, maybe not necessarily under the bylaw, but what is practically required for one-bedroom units and what financially has to work out for cleaning up the site. This is an old railroad site. There's work to be done to make sure that it's in good shape for residential use going forward, and it's kind of a balance as to what works. You could do, you know, you could do seven units with four bedrooms each. You don't get any more bedrooms than what we're proposing here. These are just one-bedroom.
But you'd get a smaller building because you'd only need one kitchen for each one, one living room for each one, and all that kind of stuff.
Oh, not necessarily so. Not necessarily so at all. I don't think, I think you'd actually take out more footprint if you started looking at.
Well, I think that building's a monster. I think it's way too big for that spot. And that's why I asked you, we've got the 29 units. You know, I could understand you want the best bang for the buck here, and six units ain't going to do it. But 29 is reaching for the moon.
Well, I'm surprised you say that about the building, given what you've got on the site now, because remember, with a finding, this is what you're weighing. You're not weighing if you look at this --
Well, let me interrupt you. Let me interrupt you for a minute. What's there now is not attractive, but I find this more detrimental.
Really?
Yes. It's just a big monster of a building. I don't have a problem with a building being on there, but this is Noah's Ark. This is unbelievable. I don't have any other questions.
No other questions. Okay, thank you. Becky?
Okay, I'm going to start in the upper right-hand corner, the driveway easement. What exactly is that?
That is an easement in the title that was reserved by B&amp;M Railroad for parking.
For parking?
For parking. It's a parking easement. Now --
Can you point it out, please?
I have a little light green pitch.
This site was owned by B&amp;M Railroad, so as you may or may not know, we have to go and apply to B&amp;M Railroad, now MBTA, once we get our approval for the building layout. And this is not unique to this site.
It's like Ague, like we did with Ague?
Possibly. We don't know that particular, but under --
Yeah, I don't know.
There is a process that before you can pull a building permit, if the property has ever been used or under the control or owned by a railroad, you have to go through this process.
Okay.
So we have to take the plan that's shown here to the MBTA and get their approval for the location of the buildings. That comes a little bit down the pipe, but not too much further than where we're at now. And this driveway easement will be part of that discussion, and hopefully we can get it released at that point. If we can't, it's a driveway easement.
Okay, so it's part of the property, but you don't control it. Is that?
We do control it. It's subject to the rights reserved by B&amp;M to park.
To park there.
Vehicles on it for purposes of serving the railroad that isn't there anymore.
So how many feet is from the corner of that easement to the building?
I'm sorry?
I know Scott's not here, but how many feet from the corner of that easement to the building for the driveway? How many feet for the driveway?
About half the distance, yeah.
Okay, so the corner, from here to here? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
That's about 20 feet from here, from the corner of this.
I'm going to ask you for more measurements, too. So, okay, there.
Go ahead, you're the best.
I know.
From here to here, so it is about 20 feet.
Usually Scott has his little scale. I know.
I have one more. Right now, this is all pavement coming in here, which it won't be. This will be grass.
So there'll be no more driveway there?
Correct.
Where's the driveway?
Over on that side.
So there's not going to be any driveway on the other side?
Yep. All the parking is over here.
Okay. So you have another narrow little space all the way down on the bottom left corner?
Yeah, that's the pinch point.
Yeah. And how many, you're showing on the plan that I have that some of that is, looks like grass. Railroad, no?
No, 26 feet.
Are you going to go right, okay, so I have a circle here on my, right here. Is this the driveway?
Yes, this is the driveway, and we've got 26 feet from the corner of the building to the lot line. Our driveway is 24 feet wide.
Okay, so where I'm seeing here looks like dirt. It is not dirt?
Right. What Scott has done on this plan is he has overlaid existing conditions and then the proposed on top. So what you're seeing here is the existing hill.
So that'll be dug up?
So you're going to cut the hill down?
Yep.
Right, and make a driveway.
And make a driveway.
Right. That's what the retaining wall is.
And the driveway's going to go right up to the edge of the property line?
Well, no, you're back about five feet or so here.
Okay, okay.
And this is a hill, so that's why it's slightly lighter in color, just as you have the existing buildings here are shown.
Okay.
He layered this plan.
Okay, okay. And the roof is 30 feet. It looks like the roof is like right to the top of 30 feet, at least on the plans that we have. And we're talking about adding some HVAC components up there, which will bring it above 30 feet. Does that count? I don't know the answer to this question.
Come on, not enough.
30 feet to the midpoint to the roof.
No, no, to the top.
No, but that's, the zoning is 30 feet to the mid-top, midpoint.
Could you clarify that?
It could go higher than that.
Equipment doesn't count in that.
It doesn't count?
Element over on, equipment doesn't count.
So if we have 30-foot roof, and then we have a two or three or five-foot condenser up there, that doesn't count?
I am going to ask that question now.
Could I hear from the building inspector?
Boy, you got to give me a minute, and I'll read it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So let me move on. So we've got one-bedroom apartments that are 979 square feet. That's a huge one-bedroom apartment. And we've got nine units on the first floor, 10 on the second floor, and 10 on the third floor. How do I answer this, ask this question? I think, my question is, is one parking space sufficient for a 979-square-foot one-bedroom apartment? It's huge.
We think that it is, and we think that's in keeping with the parking studies that have been done, but that's a planning board issue.
You can put two or three, you know, bedrooms in a 979-square-foot space.
But we're not doing that.
Well, there's a den.
And --
Yeah.
Or computer room, whatever you want to call it.
Right, right.
But that is a waiver from the planning board.
Okay.
And that will be the planning board's decision, and we have to make our case based on data that we will give them and based on our own data from our traffic study as to how many parking spaces a one-bedroom unit needs to have.
Okay.
But that is planning board jurisdiction, and we will be seeking a waiver.
Okay. And on your plan, you don't have any designated, or do you have any designated visitor parking?
We do not have, we do not have any designated visitor spaces yet that may come as part of the site plan.
Okay.
That's what we're going to designate spaces.
Okay. I'll come, I'll let the rest of the board, and then I'll come back. Do you have an answer?
Yes. Yes, they are exempt.
Okay.
All right, so let me get just clarification on this. Is this 30 feet to the midline of the roof or to the top?
We've already debated. The telephone call has debated.
All right, so clarify it for me.
It's to the top, top.
It's to the top of the building, and then there'll be additional mechanical that's subject?
In this case, I determined that the main part of that roof is flat, so.
Yeah.
So 30 feet to the top?
30 feet for a flat roof.
And then they're allowed mechanical at any height, or?
Up to 12.
Up to 12 feet, thank you. And Attorney McCann, if I have this right, so you're proposing 32, 32, 34, 39 parking spaces. Do you have that right?
It's up in the corner, right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm covered with paper here, so. Very good.
It's not your turn.
I know. But I get every turn. Any more additional questions?
No, I'm all set.
Ken?
Did I hear this correctly, that you're having commercial units on the first floor?
No, you did not hear that correctly.
It's all residential, always?
Yes, it is all residential.
29 units.
I mentioned Tapleyville, which is across the street, that has the mix of commercial on the first floor and residential as well.
Right.
This is 100% residential.
Okay. I'll wait for comments from the hearing.
Thank you, Ken.
Jeff?
If I could ask the building inspector a couple of questions? So they're here with a finding. Why isn't the 7500 square feet for new units part of a variance requirement that they need? Because it's an existing non-conforming?
The question here is, so in Res 1, if you're doing housing, multi-housing, it's by special permit through the planning board, and we have a 7500 square foot per unit.
Right.
In this case, you have a, and there is zoning, the non-conforming section, Chapter 3, you can ask for anything, and the board meets a determination.
That's up to us.
So in this case, they're trading away one building, a variance, one non-conforming building, and a whole bunch of non-conforming units, and they are willing to trade those rights away for housing units.
For, okay.
Which is an allowed use.
Yeah, but not at this density necessarily.
Not this density.
But it's up to the discussion of the board.
But that's for us to determine.
It's 14 an acre.
Okay.
New zoning.
That's the Tapleyville?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
As a baseline.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
And you have done this once relatively recently on Cherry Street. If you recall, the Jones-Boyle Insulation Business that was located on Cherry Street, we came in. That was non-conforming use. We came in and requested exactly the same thing, to change that into multi-family. And that was a mix of townhouses, duplex, and multifamily building. And interestingly enough, add them all up, 29 bedrooms, which is the same as what we're proposing here, just in a different configuration. But that was a finding because of the same thing that you just said.
Nobody in town stops me and says, why didn't you build that building bigger? Nobody says that. So I will --
Questions?
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Ken? Questions?
So in this, is this going to in any way hinder access into the Rebecca Nurse Homestead area?
Oh, no. Their access is down the street here.
All right.
We don't share an access.
Okay. And that hill that's going to be removed, is there any, I forget what it looks like over there at the Rebecca Nurse Homestead. I know there's some monuments and stuff. Is there, is that hill going to be like ruining?
I think you can see it in the pictures. You can see the hill, maybe that first picture you have right there behind the garage. You see the hill up in behind it. The Rebecca Nurse activity is further back and down, so it's not going to impact, we're not going to be doing any work outside of our property, of course. And this is just a breakdown of this, this small section right here.
So that's all on that property? It's not, yeah, obviously.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just didn't want any hindering of any, the integrity of that, that homestead or the monument. All right, I have no other questions.
Thank you, Ken. All right?
I just have a couple. I see from the deed that it's the Susan Prentice Trust that still owns the property. Is your client going, potentially going to buy the property if the plan is approved, or have they already purchased it?
No, the property is under agreement.
Okay. Do, okay. Okay, that was my only question.
Okay, thanks, Karen. I think I filtered all mine through everyone else, so. Yep. And I heard this, 10 units, first floor, nine middle floor, 10 top floor.
Nine of the first floor.
Nine, 10, 10.
Nine, 10, 10. And it is a big building. Okay, go ahead.
We have a lot of audience.
The condensers you're going to put on the roof, you said you were going to cluster them together?
Clustered together with the exception that they need a certain amount of airflow around them, and we need to have space between them to service them, so they don't go tight to each other, with a two-foot between them.
I got that. They're close to each other.
Yep.
And you said they're similar to the ones in a home unit. Well, mine makes a lot of noise in my house. Now you're going to put four or five of them together? Going to make a lot of noise.
Well, so they get baffles, and it directs that noise upwards, and then from inside our building for the residents, we, on all of our projects, we work with an acoustical engineer, and we work with them to anti-vibration mats and how they're mounted and how we detail the ceiling to work with that noise from the inside and also from the outside.
And how many are you going to have, anyway? You're not going to have one for each apartment, right?
Well, it depends what system we go with. Sometimes we will do one per apartment in some types of systems. If we do an all-electric VRF, we can gang them together, and there'll be more, probably four or five total, but that's down the road, so we don't know yet.
But these units are?
But we won't have, sorry, but we won't have an old-fashioned situation. We have sort of one big chiller, one just big massive machine that's the size of a car. They'll be smaller, more discreet.
29 smaller ones.
Max. That's one version, sure.
So but, so the roof is only serviced in the third floor, or it could be serviced in the whole building?
The roof, well, there's a couple of ways to do it. Probably, I mean, we don't know yet. Probably, I mean, we don't know yet. The roof, oftentimes services the whole building for us. I, we put them on the ground before, but there's no problems and things, I prefer the roof there if we can get some roof.
I don't have any further questions, I'm off.
Just to respond to something that Mr. C. Diddy just said about noise and things, this is the damage assessors map, and I'll pass this around, the yellow is locus, is the site that we're talking about. And as you can see, we've got Rebecca Nurse property next door, which takes up a huge area. We've got the rail trail, then we've got the park. We don't have any immediate, direct residential abutters on this side of the property. Across the street, we have commercial uses, which is, which is Tapleyville. I've also noted on here, which is in close proximity, is Dyer Court, which is a seventy-unit, according to assessors' records, seventy-unit multifamily development right here. And then Old Southern Village forces down, down here as well. So, multifamily in this general neighborhood is not uncommon, or unheard of in this area.
Can I just comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
People are going to go watch those little league baseball games in a nice, quiet summer night. So, some people are going to be disturbed by those.
If I could respond to that, there are rules that govern the amount of sound that we can have off our property.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, brother.
Yeah, and our engineer will, will, will be compiled with those rules. We can't, we can't just be loud and polluteing the neighborhood from sound.
And the people living there, too, I mean, they're not going to want to hear it.
Yeah, well, I mean, I hope you would said that right from the get-go. That's what I wanted to hear.
Thank you.
Any more additional questions from the board? Yeah, Karen?
I have one. Once, once you receive all the final permitting, how long do you think the construction project alone will take?
This is in the ten to twelve-month range. I like to think it's nine, but it's, they're usually not, they're probably ten to twelve.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, I know we have a lot of neighbors here, and we want to hear from you, obviously. Hard to keep your comments not redundant, and if you could go up and identify yourself and your address and your name, we'll start with you, go ahead. Yep, right there, plant on the shirt.
Good evening, my name is Dan Gagden, I'm a town meeting member here in Danvers, and I serve on the board of the, the Danvers Alarmless Company, the nonprofit historic organization that owns and operates the Rebecca Nurse Homestead.
Yeah, can I get your address, please?
Six Burley Farm Road is my home address. And the nurse house is one forty-nine Pine Street, right next door. And so that's the reason that I'm here. So the Nurse Homestead borders the parcel in question on two sides. As you can see from the diagram, we would be the bottom side and the backside. So as you look at it from the street, it would be the left, where it curves around, to be the rear. So really, the primary abutter most affected from this parcel. We're a historical museum, a residence, also a working farm, and we're primarily the home of Rebecca Nurse, who was killed during the sixteen ninety-two witch trials, who also have ties to the American Revolution. There are graves of soldiers who fought in the revolution on the property. And our point of view in general is, we believe the applicant's project is extreme in the effect it'll have on the neighborhood, and also extreme in the way it seeks to go around the existing zoning law. What you're being asked to decide involves a significant deviance from the zoning laws written for this neighborhood. And unlike some of the other applicants, the previous this evening, who had some pre-existing non-conforming situations to take into account, in the case of one forty-one Pine Street, the entire lot's going to be leveled, and development will start from scratch. Therefore, there's no reason for special consideration in that sense. It's not adjusting something that's already there that's kind of awkward, but this is a fresh start. So our issues with the proposed development are several. I'll mention the ones related to the proposed building first, and then the, the plot plan as posted up there. Though the issues with the lot plan are primarily caused by the attempt to fit a building that's just far too big for a pretty small parcel of land. Now, with our objections, we, we keep in mind exactly what it is that the board is being asked to approve. So the request, the application cites the non-conforming uses provisions of the bylaws, Section 310.3, which allows the board, as was mentioned, to permit a new use of the land. And so I like to quote that. It allows a new permit, quote, "to be substituted for the existing non-conforming use, provided that the board determines that the new use is not substantially more detrimental than the current use." We think it is very clear that the proposed use of a three-story apartment complex that seeks to go around the zoning laws is far more detrimental than the current use, as has been already mentioned. The current use being mostly a parking lot, a one-story, small engineer's office, small commercial space, formerly an ice cream stand, and the, the small landscaper's garage in the rear. What's proposed really couldn't be much more different from what the current situation is. As to the building, the request for a three-story residential building is unlike anything in this immediate neighborhood, and it's far more dense than what's allowed under the residential one zoning. The point was mentioned that by right, only six units, whereas here, the request is twenty-nine. That's a stark difference. So first, the area per unit is the seventy-five hundred square feet required by the residential one zoning law. Instead of this, the applicant seeks only one thousand seven hundred and eight square feet per unit, and that's at the, the bottom corner of the, the plot plan. But I have the blown-up version, but it's the, the bottom left there. So, the request of seventeen hundred and eight square feet per unit is only twenty-two percent of the legal minimum required for multifamily building in the zoning district. That's an enormous difference. And it's, it's kind of outrageous to be asked, with that much of a difference from the norm and how the law is written. Second, the building's higher than any of the neighboring buildings. The neighborhood is primarily single-family houses. There are a couple of commercial ones that are not three feet tall across the street, relatively short. And having a twenty-nine-unit building is just unlike anything nearby. There's, there's nothing close to that large. Particularly with the, the size of the building, along with the height, the properties are, are pretty flat. The nearest properties are the rail trail, of course, a flat recreation trail, the Rebecca Nurse Homestead, which is in that area, a working farm with flat fields, Tapley Park, ballpark with flat baseball fields. So this, this large three-story structure is wildly out of place, given what's, what's next to it. And with it being out of place, currently, the planning board and town meeting are undertaking the large, years-long zoning initiative of downtown, or could be, depending on, on how it goes. And one of the intentions of that is that between zones and within zones, buildings seemed out of place, so was the, the underlying claim for the rezoning, and that it, the zones didn't quite fit smoothly together. With this proposal, that just brings that same problem to a different neighborhood, where uses don't seem to fit, the size of buildings, the scale of buildings, don't seem to fit together with their environs. Third, as to why the project should not be allowed, to avoid the zoning laws written, in, in the file that I'd read through in, in the office a week or so ago, and also this evening, the Tapleyville overlay district was mentioned, which does allow for larger development than residential one. It is not across the street, this parcel does not abut order that zoning district. And by, when the application mentioning the Tapleyville district, actually, looking at it the other way, is a pretty strong argument against approving a project such as this. When the Tapleyville district was created by the planning board, it was fairly recently, it was only a few years ago, and the entire corner of Pine and Holton Street was examined, many of the lots were evaluated for inclusion in the district, and this parcel was intentionally left out. We assume that the planning board had good reasons for this, probably because of how it, it's a small parcel, it's between the, the rail trail, the Nurse Homestead, the Tapley Park. It's, it's an awkward fit. And so to use that district, which is around the corner, as an argument for it, doesn't quite fit. Additionally, a building of this size would have a significant detrimental impact on the day-to-day life and operations of those that live in the neighborhood, and the operations of the Rebecca Nurse Homestead Museum. Pine Street's already congested, it's hard to turn out of driveways. In a way, this is exacerbated at certain times by all the visitors to Tapley Park, you know, naturally, that's just certain time periods in an evening, but it becomes a peak time. And this traffic situation would be made much worse with the addition of the proposed twenty-nine residential units. As mentioned in the discussion of, of the parking spaces per unit, one probably wouldn't expect only one car per unit, and so the number of residents, the number of cars, but also the number of trips per day would be very unlike what the situation is now. Two small offices, the landscaping garage, there's not a lot of trips involved there, not noticeably. And so because of that, although it's a proposed residential use, it will be significantly more detrimental on the neighborhood than adding just another single-family home, or just the six units by right. And so with the effect on the Rebecca Nurse Homestead, you know, we attract thousands of visitors each year from across the globe who come to experience the seventeenth century. Truly a unique historic site, not just in, in Danvers or Massachusetts, but, but the world. Having an effective barrier between ourselves and the neighboring properties is really key to our viability as a nonprofit historic site. The Rebecca Nurse Homestead, if it was on Fifth Avenue, wouldn't be the same. And so, one of the aspects that makes our, our property great is this barrier from the outside, and along with that, a portion of the museum's income comes from filming. So radical change with the building next door, and particularly, as I'll mention with the plot plan, the buffer, that slope where there's the closest point to our property, is more than just a minor inconvenience in terms of that filming. It threatens our income, and the, the noise, as was brought up from the, which I had not seen in the, the, the application on file, adds to that significantly as well.
Okay, so clearly you're not in favor.
I am not.
To sum it up, because I want to hear from some other neighbors as well. Yeah, yeah, hold on, we just finished.
May I continue quickly, please? I'll try to wrap it up as quick as I can.
Yeah.
And a couple of points I wanted to respond to that weren't in the application as filed. So in terms of the lot area, really quick, the changes are very close to the property line, along one stretch, there's going to be a really large and transformative retaining wall built zero inches from the property line. This involves excavating a large section of the slope, the slope supports power lines and many trees, which are our buffer. Building the wall will cause root damage to these trees. If you visit the property, you can see the trees are along the slope, and you can visibly see the roots, which will no longer be existing. Therefore, this, this buffer is harmed, will be harmed if it's thinner undermined. In terms of specific measurements from the plan, again, from the table at the bottom corner, the zoning requires thirty-foot side yard between the building and the abutters. Instead, the applicant asks for only twenty-six feet instead of the required thirty. This is not acceptable to us. The zoning requires three feet of landscaping alongside of the building to help it blend with the neighborhood. Instead, the applicant wants only six inches of landscaping in one section. That, again, in terms of blending it with the neighborhood, is not acceptable. The zoning requires ten feet of landscaping between the building and the abutters lot line, which is of, of key interest to us. Instead, the applicant is asking only three-point-five feet instead of ten, in some cases. As mentioned, the buffer's important. The general layout is detrimental to the neighborhood as a whole. In terms of the six units versus twenty-nine, the zoning law requires a thousand square feet per unit for this section. Instead, the development would only have seven hundred, just seventy percent of what's legally required. In terms of open space, that amount of land, although it appears as if the property's surrounded by open space, this isn't quite the case. The twenty-seven acres of the nurse house is not restricted in any way. It is not protected open space, it is almost entirely developable land. With this project in front of us, our space right next door is twenty-three times as large, and we're precedent to be set that a building of that size could be built in that small space. Although the Nurse Homestead has no plans to develop land, should there be financial trouble, and a purchaser or developer were to come back to the board, if this could be asked for, they could ask for twenty-three next door. That could certainly be an application. With the, last on the plot plan, or two last things on the plot plan, snow. With it being very tight along the edge, tight along the rail trail, there's nowhere to plow snow. Placing it along the rail trail is, of course, objectionable, naturally. Placing it along the hill is the only other option, that's further erosion of the buffer, and of the power lines that Danvers Electric maintains. Those are right there on the line, right next to what's going to be excavated. Lastly, the plot plan notes, a hundred percent of the parcel is within two-hundred feet of the river. In addition to this parcel being commercial since nineteen seventy, it's been commercial since about nineteen hundred, as a coal depot for the railroad. I think the parking easement mentioned could have possibly even been for trains, not necessarily cars. And with that, there's, as a coal depot, the idea we're excavating a cellar out of this, it used to be an oil facility, excavating that, that's an issue for further down the process, surely, but something to be considered with excavating this property that hasn't been excavated in that number of years. That could be a true hazard right next to the Crane River, not just a hazard for the nurse house next door, the neighbors, but those further down. And a couple of quick points that were mentioned by the applicant. With the noise concern, we were not aware that there was, strictly speaking, in Danvers, a bylaw regarding noise. We know this is an issue that had been brought up before planning at some point in time, so that continues to be a concern. The closest point to us on that diagram, bottom left, as you look at the map, actually in a way is the most significant point, that's close to one of our buildings, where the majority of our filming is done. So to say that that's not near a used area, is it not accurate? With the green area painted in, a big section of that's the retaining wall, which we assume is not green, and so that green does not entirely represent grass. The parking issues were previously raised. In general, so the affordable housing, although we support in general affordable housing in Danvers, it's simply not the issue being voted on at the moment. That's not the zoning bylaw that the application is for. We support it, but that isn't really the consideration at hand in this instance. With the building fitting in with Danvers history, as the way that it's designed, Danvers history is next door, we're not quite sure it fits with that, as designed or the scale. And lastly, again, just that the idea of what the board should be deciding upon is the new use is not substantially more detrimental, we believe that there, there are no grounds to approve this project, that it is clearly more detrimental than what is currently there. And I appreciate you bearing with me as I spoke.
Okay, thank you. Do you like to respond?
I'll just respond to a few things, I certainly appreciate.
We're going to have to respond to each, each applicant, I mean, each person, or?
I'll let her get this out of the way, that was a long one.
I just want to grab a, a few things, I appreciate certainly when folks review the application very carefully and thoroughly. However, we are not in fact avoiding the zoning laws, quite contrary. This is the zoning bylaw process, and this is the zoning act process under Section 3 of the zoning bylaw, under forty-eight, Section 6. This is a finding to allow the alteration or substitution of a non-conforming use, and in fact, we are working exactly within the zoning laws. The Tapleyville, I would disagree with the comments made about Tapleyville, Tapleyville is across the street. The reason this lot was perhaps not included in the Tapleyville rezoning was, that was for industrial parcels previously, but Tapleyville allows commercial uses. This is in a residential zone, and I think there is just a strong argument to say this wasn't included because it was not the intent to have commercial uses permitted by right in the residential zone. And this is an opportunity to bring this site more into conformance with the bylaw and with the uses in the residential, in the residential zoning district, and that's what, that's what we are proposing to do here. And the argument is not, if we take everything down on this site and we eliminate all the non-conformities, that this will be more detrimental to the neighborhood than starting from a clean slate. That's not the legal standard here. The legal standard here is we have a non-conforming use that is hundred percent commercial, with non-conforming buildings in a residential zone. And that, those uses can be expanded and altered by... And those uses can be expanded and altered by action of this board and otherwise, because it's grandfather protection there as to the buildings as well as to the uses. So what you might see there now is not what you might have there if the commercial uses stay. And so the legal standard is whether what we are proposing, which is a residential use on this site in a residential building, whether that is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing commercial status and the nonconforming status of what is there now, both as to use and as to building.
Thank you. Additional comments from the public? Yep, Boston Bruins. Yeah, either one, either one works.
My name is William Brown. I live at 148 Pine Street, which is right across from the proposed site. I disagree with the size of the building. I really think it's way too big. You know, 20, 30 apartments would be perfect, maybe, but I can't accept it without finding of two facts that I have a question on. One of them is, in the last 13 years, three times the sewerage has backed up into my property. Now, we know that sewer line is small. We've had it blown out three times. They're going to add 28 more apartments to it? I'd like to find out how we're going to do that, or if we're going to change it to make it acceptable. Plus, I've been living at this site for 30 years. Back when I first got there, that was Elliott Fuels. They had three monstrous, probably 4,000-gallon tanks out in the back of the building. And I know for a fact, there is oil in the ground.
Yeah, well, if this site's developed, they'll be required to test everything.
They'll have to have a hazardous waste check of that property.
That will definitely happen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The sewer issue would be addressed at site plan approval through the town meeting.
Hi, Paul McNulty, Precinct 2. I live at 20 Holton Street in Danvers, and I'm on the Rail Trail Committee. So I'm here less to talk about the specific number of units. Personally, I think residential's fine. Personally, I think it's an awful lot of units for what's being proposed. But I just want to make sure there's a few things that are understood by this group and by the applicants for the building there. So the rail trail runs right next to that. And so there's about, by our counts, 500 or 600 people a day are going to be crossing, or more, maybe about 1,000 a day on a good day in the summertime, cross that street right there on Pine Street. Now, there's pedestrian crossing lights that are in there today. So I really would ask, there's consideration given to pedestrian safety if you've got 30, and it's probably going to be far more than the 30 cars that are parking there, especially given the size of the unit. So thinking about access, how people are going to drive onto that street, how they're going to turn, if they're going to turn left or right, I couldn't quite follow from the map. But I would think really encourage the applicants to address pedestrian safety as people are crossing the trail.
Yeah, that really wouldn't be the purview of this board. That would be more of a planning board.
Okay, so they can at least hear it from me, that that's an important aspect.
They're writing it down.
All right? And you've also got the Tapleyville Park there, the same issue. You've got kids coming in and out of that park.
And it may be an opportunity to address all that.
Could be. So just a couple more points, and I will wrap it up in the same line. So we, the volunteers, are out there picking up stuff off the trail all the time. That particular area has a lot of stuff that gets dumped in it. And there's other areas of the trail where we've had issues with people driving on the trail, dumping snow on the trail, trash on the trail. And I would really like to see in the plans, assuming this goes forward in some way, specific thought given to how is the right-of-way protected? How do we avoid the dumping of trash, the dumping of snow? Because you look at that parking, I don't know where you're going to put the snow. These are things that we deal with all the time. So these really happen. So I would encourage them, the group, to try to explain or understand how they're going to avoid these problems. You have the same, you go up to Highlands now and look at the work being done there now. There's trash all over the place. So again, think of the rail trail. We're more than happy to give you more information about it, but consider that as you're thinking about approving it, but also doing the design. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Additional comments from the public? Mr. Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Dugan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. Just a comment that I've used on other outsized projects that are kind of above and beyond what I think you would normally see. So for Table 2 in the zoning bylaws, where it talks to the number of dwelling units per acre, and also the required parking spaces that are required for each dwelling unit. So by right, I think I heard six or seven units for this 1.1 acres. And then the number, the amount of parking, I think it's like 1.4 instead of the two. So Table 2 isn't just a guideline. It's an actual law that was approved by the voters of Danvers through their duly-elected representatives at town meeting. And so when we dismiss that will of the town and just arbitrarily go with some other number that's a lot larger, I think that's a disservice to the residents of town. I really think 29 units seems like over the top. I'm almost thinking that 29 is just shoot for the moon, and then later, the number will be reduced to maybe 20, which probably is maybe more in scope. But we often see these projects, they're initially proposed like it's going to be like this, but then the applicant kind of says, you know, well, we're kind of nice. We're aware of the concerns of the community, so we'll reduce the number. And then, so they still walk away with a considerable number of units, but it's probably the number that they had initially going in. And I would like to see the applicants describe, what is the, from a financial perspective, what's the break even? Like, how many units do they need to kind of break even and then kind of go from there?
So you would be in favor of something smaller in scope?
Well, I think, I think there's an argument to be made about whether or not this is more or less detrimental.
And we could be your all-night argument.
What's there today is kind of a passive use. It's not really utilizing the property probably to its full potential. We do need more housing. This thing looks like a 40B project to me, the way it's just kind of fallen out of the sky. But something more in scope, I think, is reasonable. Maybe 15 units, something like that. The architecture is very attractive, but this, the scope of it, the size of it, I think is just over the top.
Okay, thank you. Additional comments from the public? Now, Corinne.
Bill Clemmons, 49 Summer Street. I am a current member of the Alarmless Company and also a charter member of it. I was there when we bought the place back 45 years ago. Just on a landscape view of the property, I also do tours over in Salem on the trolley. And between all the activities that I've done at the nurse house and hearing a lot of people that are in Salem, but they've visited our site, I get a constant comment from people saying, "We turned off of Pine Street, and we drove up the driveway, and it was like going back in time." And if you stand behind the house, between the house and the barn in the driveway, you can get a pretty big panoramic view and not see very much 20th century, 21st century. People really get a feel for what that looked like back 200, 300 years ago. And what I'm hearing here is we've got three stories with the possibility of going up 12 more feet on top of the roof. You're talking 42 feet. Dan alluded to this fact about our sometimes having filming done up there. You put that big arc in that corner against our property, and that really is detrimental to what the visitors come to see when they visit us. So I would have to say, I'm not for this because it's really going to be a detriment to the visitors' experience when they come up to visit us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you just respond very quickly, just so that we're clear? We are not asking for any relief on height. The height meets the residential one zoning district height.
Thank you. Mr. Bradstreet? Yep.
Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. Just quickly, it's too big. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Okay, I'll come back to the board. I think I started with Bob.
This is actually rare, where the old piece of property is less detrimental than the improvement. And I believe that. This building is a monster. It's, you know, I can understand they want to build an apartment building on it. I think 29 units and the size of this building is too big. I will not vote for it.
Thank you, Bob. Becky.
I also think that something could have been designed that wasn't so substantial, maybe a little two-story building. And I just, the parking and everything, it's too much for the site. It's just packed in there, so I wouldn't vote for this.
Thank you, Becky. Ken.
Thank you. Do I think the site needs to be cleaned up a little? I do. It doesn't look great. It looks awful, in fact. Res one zoning for seven units requires 52,000-plus square feet, which we don't have, but they're asking for 29 units. It's way too big. I will not vote for this.
Thank you, Ken. Jeff.
It's way too big. It's too tall. It doesn't have enough parking spaces. I will not vote for it.
Thank you. Ken.
I think the proximity to the rail trail and the Rebecca Nurse Homestead and stuff, I just don't think it fits. It's massive. It's just, it would be an eyesore. I wouldn't vote for that.
Thank you, Ken. And Corinne.
I will not vote for this. It's just too big. It's enormous. There's just not enough space there.
Okay. I too wouldn't support it in its current form. However, and I keep this with the residents in mind, I would support something smaller, and I would remind the residents that this is zoned commercially and...
Residential.
It's residential.
Well, it's residential with a...
It's a nonconforming.
It's a nonconforming. So you could get another type of business in there, which would be much more detrimental than what currently exists. So I think if I was a neighbor of this, I would be more inclined to see residential property versus commercial use. So that's where I sit. I would rather see something smaller. So what would you like to do? You don't have the votes, clearly.
But I received a lot of good input, so I think what we would like to do is continue to your next meeting.
Which is February 24.
24.
Because we are not here on the holiday. And if we are going to get updated plans, we would like them...
The Tuesday before.
The Tuesday before, which I think is the 23rd.
No. How could it be the 23rd? The meeting's the 24th.
I don't know. It's late. I've been up since 5:00. The Tuesday before.
I knew.
And I would encourage the residents to return. And can I get a motion to continue this until 24?
So moved.
Second.
I'll see.
Becky, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See you on 24.
Thank you to all the neighbors that took your time to come tonight.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you very much.
Good night, Danvers.
Night, Danvers.